Okay, well, welcome to our meeting of July twenty fifth. And will the city clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Berkowitz.
Here.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Here.
Alderwoman Buse.
Here.
Alderwoman Patel. Alderman Fader.
Here.
Alderman Hummel.
Here.
Mayor Harris.
Here.
City Manager Gibson.
Here.
City Attorney O'Keefe.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, now's the time in our agenda when we ask for public requests and petitions from the audience, either the online audience or here in person. Don't see anybody here in person, and I don't see anyone online. We have attendees. Can you switch to that? And anybody, we do have some online. Do we have any comments or questions from our attendees on Zoom that about things that are not on our agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to the consent agenda. And we'll take the city manager report. Want to say anything?
Just a motion and a vote.
Yeah, okay.
Those items.
Okay. Um, I just want to call out just so it gets some attention that in the consent agenda is the recommendation for the Philippine Village Recommendation. And so again, I'm very excited that this has come through. I'm glad that y'all support it and it'll be great to get moving on actually completing it. Okay, so we need a motion.
I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda with the items listed.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, it's a roll call.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Alderman.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
And Jana, I see you're listening, so congratulations and thanks again for all the hard work on that recommendation. Now we're into the city manager report.
Yes, the Board of Aldermen approved an agreement with the School District of Clayton for the provision of school resource officers or SROs on July eleventh. The district is requesting that the agreement be amended to remove any references to a fourth or fifth SRO. All other provisions and terms remain unchanged in the attached documents and staff recommends approval of the ordinance. So just a simple amendment here.
Um, any, any discussion? Okay, okay, Alderman Berkowitz.
I'd like to introduce bill number sixty nine eighty four to approve an agreement with the School District of Clayton for school resource officers to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number six nine eight four, first reading and ordinance approving a police services agreement for school resource officers with the Clayton School District.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I moved, I moved that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number sixty nine eighty four in the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the minutes reflect the board has given unanimous consent.
Let's introduce bill number sixty nine eighty four to approve an agreement with the School District of Clayton for school resource officers to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? City Attorney.
Bill number sixty nine eight four, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving a police services agreement for school resource officers with the Clayton School District.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Hi.
Alderman Hummel.
Hi.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. You'd like to report on the art project there?
Yes, so this is public art for the PUD that's at eighty two twenty and eighty two sixty Forsyth Boulevard. So over there on the Forsyth Curve. Pewdes are approved through a point system with points awarded for different public benefits in exchange for relief or modification of certain zoning and subdivision regulations. Per the ordinance that governs the development, the public art was awarded three points out of the possible five, and it was described as, "Public art on the property shall include at a minimum a monumental piece at the entry and several complementary pieces along the front pedestrian walk. A specific plan or rendering of the public art shall be submitted to the Public Art Advisory Committee and the Board of Aldermen for approval. In the event such artwork does not merit three points and the applicant does not make timely changes, the PUD development plan shall be reconsidered by the Board of Aldermen." The development plan approved by the Plan Commission and Board of Aldermen includes one substantial piece near the main entrance and two corresponding pieces along the public sidewalk. The public art plan proposed by the applicant identifies three similar art pieces. A larger sculpture is proposed at the north end of the property adjacent to the entrance. Two smaller sculptures are proposed south of the entrance adjacent to Forsyth Boulevard and the residential patios. The sculptures designed by Jeremy Thomas are proposed to be inflated steel of varying colors. The Public Art Advisory Committee met with representatives of the development on Friday, July twenty first, to discuss the concept, and staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the public art installation as submitted. And I don't know if the applicant is online or not.
Online. I, I can't tell. Is the applicant in the Zoom audience? Apparently not. Okay. Um, can I ask if the PAC was unanimous in their recommendation of this art?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I was there.
Okay, great.
So it was, I mean, yeah, I mean, it was a, it was a great discussion. Meredith, Meredith McKinley was there with Via Partnership, and then Willie Shearburn was there, who I guess works with the Via Partnership. Jacob Rebe was there, who's, or Jake Rebe, who's the Chair of PAC. Sally Pinchard was there, Dwyer Brown was there. And then Steve, Stephen Mather was there with Midas. So, um, yeah, everybody was really in agreement that this was, these were some cool new pieces. You know, it's really something different for the city. Um, I would say the only, just in terms of like what this artist does, he actually welds the steel almost like origami. It's really interesting. And he infuses high pressure and then like somehow forms it into the structures that you see. Um, so really the only, I, I asked because I mean, I'm obviously no art expert, but I was, I thought it was kind of cool that two of the colors that he picked were blue and orange, which are the Clayton colors, but I don't think he, it was, it's my understanding he did not pick those colors at all because they were, were for Clayton. They're just the colors that he picked. Um, but yeah, there was a good discussion. I think everybody was in agreement that these were really cool pieces of art. Really, the only concern that people expressed was the yellow piece is very, you know, front and center at the door, which is great. The other pieces, people were a little concerned and they were maybe a little small. So I think, I mean, in terms of like, they don't want them getting lost in the landscaping. Um, so I think they were going to discuss with the artist about, you know, putting them on pedestals a little bit just so they're a little bit, you know, above the sidewalk rather than kind of resting on the ground. So I think there'll be some discussion with that. The artist plans to come into town, um, you know, when they're installed. So yeah, I mean, I, yes, everybody was in full agreement that these were, you know, something different too. I think that was, you know, they're a little bit different than other art pieces that are around. And so I think it will be a really nice addition to the curve. So.
Yeah, they look like they'll be real conversation pieces.
Yeah, yeah.
Good. Uh, okay, well, I will open the discussion. Is there any comment from our Zoom audience? Hey, I don't see any. Um, I'll just go in order of seniority. Ira, did you have any comments or questions about this?
I did not, thank you.
I know, I heard what you just said. Um, Alderwoman Buse, anything? Oh, good. Um, Mr. Fader.
Looked good to me.
Yep. Alderman Hummel.
Is there, um, was there any discussion with the artist or representative artists about the relative safety of the sculpture in terms of making sure there weren't sharp edges or if somebody climbs on it or does something? I just want to make sure that somebody doesn't, just by touching it, somehow gets hurt.
Oh, I mean, I, I know that, that didn't come up, but I don't think, I mean, I don't think there'll be any sharp, sharp edges at all. I think it's all, you know, it's all powder coated and I'm sure that all the edges are soft. I, I mean, hopefully, I mean, I would guess there would be something, there's going to be a plaque or something that says what the name of the artist is.
Don't climb on it.
Yes, I'm sure there'll be something like.
Oh, yeah, that's the pedestal in addition to giving it better visibility and maybe is appropriate for any sculpture. It just strikes me too to prevent, um, small children perhaps from climbing on it or large children for that matter.
Right, I don't think so. I, I think it's also important, I know that the Forsythia Development in general, I, I mean, I know they have a door person. So I mean, I would think that, you know, at least, you know, I, yeah. I mean, I guess that question didn't per se come up, but I, I, I wouldn't imagine there's any sharp edges or anything. And this artist, we are not new. He's well into his career. I mean, they called him like kind of a mid-career artist, so he's done these kind of all over. I mean, there's some, I think there were pictures where they're kind of out in like public areas and stuff, so. He's not, he's not new to creating these at all.
I know, and I believe all of that. I just want to make sure that we've, I, I, there's so little that we can weigh in on. So just making sure that it's a safe thing is, is all that I wanted to make sure of.
Yeah, I, yeah, I guess I can't say that, that didn't come up. And I mean, I'm happy to, you know, pass that information on to Meredith McKinley, especially in the people at Midas to see if they have any response to that. But I don't think that there's any, um, there weren't, I, I wouldn't imagine there'd be any concerns about that, so.
Okay, very good. All right, um, I think we can take a motion.
Um, I, uh, I moved to approve the public art for eighty two fifty Forsyth.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that completes that. When, when will, I mean, when, I don't know when the project's going to be done, but.
Um, that was asked as well. So Steve anticipates that, you know, as floors get finished, perhaps late in twenty twenty four. So you know, maybe the first floor people will begin to move in. I think once the construction fencing comes down, so, you know, hopefully late twenty twenty four. But then, you know, if the weather messes up. But yeah, I mean, hopefully in the fall twenty twenty four, the construction fencing will come down and they'll be able to install them in, yeah, before the winter or something, so.
Okay, very good. Okay, unless there's anything else, we can go ahead with our roundtable. We can start with Ira. What have you been up to?
Well, I've been in Colorado now for almost a week, so I've not been up to anything there in, uh, in Clayton. I, I, but I, I would like to just raise one thing, and that is, um, I've had several discussions with David and they've been very pleasant. You know, one thing that strikes me about our, our, our region is that we have a city, the city of St. Louis, that has a dispatch center that apparently is, 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 is completely dysfunctional. Um, and, and I, and I think it, it's something that I, I don't know that there's anything that we can do about that in terms of helping, but you know, these, these incidents, I keep reading about people having some kind of tragedy, something happening, they need help, and, and, and takes an, over an hour for a dispatch to even, even respond to their call. Um, is really, it, it's a reflection on the region. It's not just a reflection on the city of St. Louis. And I'm just opening for discussion at some point, not now, but at some point in time, if we can discuss maybe something that maybe we can do to help alleviate some poor woman bleeding out because they couldn't get hold of the city dispatch. And yet we had emergency services absolutely available at the same time that this was happening. Um, somehow, none of this makes any sense to me, and I just hope that there's something we could all maybe put our heads together. And I know we, we share our dispatch with other cities, but you know, if, if somebody, if somebody could raise the flag, I, I'm happy to do it. I, I'm just throwing that out there, and it's something I've been thinking about for the last three weeks, so. Um, anyway, that's it for me, though.
Um, Bridget, do you have anything to report?
Um, well, I don't need to talk about the art commission meeting because we had that this week. But prior to that, um, last week, we did have a Plan Commission ARB meeting. Um, the conditional use permit was approved for Barcelona. They're going to go in next to the Calzone Place.
Great.
Um, over on Forsyth, they'll be back. Um, and then, um, there were a few other kind of small things that were discussed, but the big thing was a conceptual review for the one eleven, one twenty one South Merrimack, which is the seven up building, the county owned, very dilapidated looking building. So, um, it was, you know, I think, you know, we've all seen it a little bit, but it was, um, it was a good conceptual discussion. I think for the most part, Plan Commission liked, um, what was presented um, in terms of the smaller, you know, the kind of the smaller tower that they're going to preserve, and then the higher tower, I think they really, I think everybody kind of liked the, they have these kind of different designs depending on the building, um, and everybody kind of liked that. Um, and we certainly talked about all the different things that they will need to do as part of the PUD process. So overall, it was a good, um, discussion, I thought, and so we'll see what happens. They seem pretty motivated to get going. The one thing that was kind of interesting was at the top of the twenty story tower, they were going to have some sort of cut out thing that would be art, an art installation of some kind um, that I guess could be viewed from afar. We weren't sure how close they'd be able to see it, but that was kind of interesting. We'll see what happens, so. Um, but yeah, overall, it was good discussion.
It's good to know. Um, you know, we've talked about our skyline before, and so I think that that's, I'm, I'm glad they're considering something.
Right. And we, we told them, and we, and it's not like they're going to have like a branding thing on it. It would be something that would be attractive. Um, I will say, I then reminded them that there are other apartment buildings and condominium buildings nearby, so not to have it glow so as to, um, destroy the, you know, you know, have all kinds of light pollution for those other residential communities, but, um, yeah, so, but it was, it was a good discussion.
Good.
We'll see.
Good.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask, was this, I don't know what our process is. Is this just a preliminary discussion or what was the point of this?
Yeah, so the conceptual hearing is something that just happens. Um, the developer can come in and propose a project to the Plan Commission. There's really no public comment at all. Um, the public could potentially ask questions, but it's really just feedback that the developer gets from Plan Commission ARB, that's it. And so there, they've made no formal application to the city. It's just really exactly just, you know, feedback from the Plan Commission. And then, you know, I think for the most part, if they come to the conceptual hearing, they eventually make formal application, but some projects don't. Um, so yeah.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Susan.
Uh, yeah, first, I, I'll pick up on what Ira said, that, that really resonates. I think that our regional responsibility, we have, we have so much, and when you hear something, especially something that, that's, that, that's sharp, um, we have to take that both ethically and for our own self-preservation, we have to, we have to think reasonably on a lot of things. So thanks for bringing that up, Ira. Um, then we had a sustainability meeting I, last week or so, and the very, very crisp agenda covered a lot. A lot of it was, uh, touching on topics that have come up before. It was also shared at the group that we should pay attention to the Missouri Environmental that.org site, which tracks legislation out there, and apparently there's a comment period right now for some plastics registration. I can't remember what it was, but, um, watching just what's happening at the state level. We had an update on the Seoul Smart Application. Um, apparently we are pretty much done with the bronze level and it's doing a little bit more training of staff, but we're there. And then the goal would be to move us up to try to be where Kansas City is, which is at a silver level, and nobody at this side of the state is there yet. The other topic then was the benchmarking and trying to get information on building sizes and figuring out the scope of how we're doing it and what we will include in that effort. We had an update on the no idling efforts going on, trying to raise awareness on that and the, 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 the tools are all there and we just have to start enforcing it. And Suzanne Fuchs is going to bring that to the committee next time, which, um, this is what she does professionally as well, so that should be, that should be very helpful. A livable committee master plan was mentioned, that the survey is going, is ready to go out. And then the hydration station grant, I believe, is in or ready to be submitted. They're finalizing a list of recycling resources to be available probably on our website and includes the things that we don't know how to recycle, the, the odd, the odd things that we all have in our home. So we don't know where to take it. Um, and, and there's a lot of different places that will be tried. I think they'll try to keep that updated. That was about it. Two issues that came up at the end, but with audience and committee comments were both to consider looking at the, uh, the popularity and the, the current use of the gas light prohibition. I think we all saw that. And as few put up the lights that are, that have the gas is a questions of how much does it use? And, and is this what we want in our city and what's the impact of it? And that led to a discussion to, or we're just bringing up, have we considered what's happening with fire pits as well and any impact on that? The discussions on those two are very, very short, but they were two topics that were brought up. The group is very aware that they certainly are all investing in this and seem to, to, to do, do the work behind getting the information for what they're going to come to the board. But I suspect we'll get some things coming our way soon.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I forgot, I did have a steering committee meeting this afternoon as well, which I, um, so that was really good. The consultants talked to the steering committee about, um, they kind of dived into all our prior plans and then gave, um, the steering committee kind of a primer on each of those different plans. So, um, they also talked to us kind of about current data and just, you know, the fact that our population has gone up about eight percent, which, you know, the county, the five county region only went up about two percent. So we grew faster. Um, I won't go in, there was a lot of different data and it was really interesting, but one of the things, um, forty-four percent of our population is millennials, so they're between ages twenty seven, forty-two, which I was surprised, so almost half of our population. And then thirty-seven percent of our population is in one-person households. So people living in, you know, one-bedroom apartments or studios, which I thought was interesting too. Um, but I would also just encourage everybody, um, the first open house is next week at the Center of Clayton, where you can come in and talk to the consultants. So, um, I don't know, I sent it, I sent out an email to all the people I kind of like, you know, think would be interested or at least, so just to remind them about engageclayton.com because the survey is going to go out at the end of July. So, and also just to saying to people like, this is a big effort, but it's really going to only be truly successful if, um, we get lots of people to participate, so. Um, so yeah, but I feel like the planning effort, it's really kind of ramping up, so it's great.
We've put out the yard signs essentially, right? So that's what I've been seeing those, I think that's great.
Right.
And then this report that you're talking about, is that, uh, available for anybody to do that on our website or somewhere we can read it to, whatever presentation they gave today?
I think on a, will they, do you think they'll put it on engageclayton.com? I'm not sure. It was, it was an interesting presentation.
So we, there's a ton of data that they've already been gathering. So we did an hour-long update today. So we took some just kind of pieces that we thought would be interesting discussion points that they summarized. Um, we've been working with consultants after that. We kind of discussed doing a similar slideshow to what is on the Concordia and Wash U site, where they'll run through the same slides they presented to the steering committee and talk over the slides and put that video online as opposed to just throwing the slides out again. So we'll work on that in the next few weeks. And then the full dashboard with all of the data will go out for public consumption along with the existing conditions report, and that's targeting to be completed sometime mid-August.
Okay.
So, a similar, at, at your all, um, the joint meeting with the Plan Commission and the discussion session that's coming up on your agenda, it'll be a kind of a similar style of a presentation to what the steering committee saw today.
Yeah, I'd be interested in just seeing all those, those numbers.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yep, sorry, I forgot about that.
No, no problem. Mr. Fader, anything?
Um, on the Community Equity Commission, uh, I think we were aware that Dr. Bolton from Wash U had at least informally announced, I think via Facebook, that she was leaving the university and going out of town. But I think just recently Andrea confirmed with her that she is in fact leaving. So that means there is a Ward One opening on the CEC, uh, which we'll need to obviously address. Um, separately on the CEC, the Subcommittee, the Housing Subcommittee, um, had arranged, I think I mentioned at a prior meeting, uh, to invite, uh, members of that committee as well as our police chief to meet with, uh, faculty from, um, the Brown School. And that meeting did take place since our last meeting. It was a very, I thought, productive meeting, about an hour and fifteen minutes over there at Brown. Uh, they had, I think, five different faculty members who met with us, which was a, a pretty impressive for a turnout. A lot of interesting ideas, I think the chief got some good thoughts, um, to pursue probably if there was any idea, and again, extremely preliminary, and of course, concerned how the chief feels about it. But one suggestion was that at some point, some consideration be given to adding as a staff member, uh, at least on a part-time basis, someone who is more of a social worker in terms of their professional expertise. Um, in the thought that that would help deal with the issue, which was the primary topic of the unhoused in Clayton, and that someone like that might be helpful, but that there might be other things that someone who is like a part-time social worker could do, maybe provide some release from our police force from some duty. So at least that was a thought that I think will be pursued. Again, I'm interested as we go forward, the chief's take on it from a, and, and the city manager from a personnel perspective, but an interesting concept. So it was a good meeting.
Good. Alderman Hummel.
Um, we had the first of our, uh, series of community meetings about the, uh, Washington University and Concordia Seminary Projects. In some ways, I, I think of this as a precursor to our, um, master plan engagement and our parks engagement. And so I think the fact that we're doing, um, all of these yard signs now, um, the direct, uh, mail and other things, this outreach is paying dividends. Um, and so I'm glad they see that we're doing that. Um, last evening's, um, community engagement, neighborhood engagement was here with the Hillcrest Neighborhood. We've got two more, um, on Wednesday, two more on Thursday, so ten neighborhoods in all will be represented. So last night's group, um, was, um, well-attended both online and, um, in person. And I'd summarize the, at least in my opinion, the, uh, the comments in three broad areas. Um, the first would be, don't adversely affect our neighborhood, um, and property values with this, meaning specifically, uh, don't generate more vehicular or pedestrian traffic, more noise. Don't bring crime to our neighborhood. Don't erect unsightly, um, uh, walls. Don't have inadequate buffers, don't tear down our big trees. Um, and then the second set was sort of more of an opportunity, which was, I think, exciting. And I'm wondering whether other neighborhoods will see it the same way, which is find a way to make Big Bend better um, by either slowing traffic, um, or somehow making it, um, an improved, uh, safety and overall experience for pedestrians and bikers. Um, Washington University has put forward some, um, uh, offers to create, um, improved, uh, pedestrian ways and bikeways along the, uh, Big Bend, so we'll see where that goes. Um, and I'll let David weigh in on meeting with the county since it's a Big Bend road. Uh, Big Bend is a county road. Um, and then the last one, um, this was a small comment, um, but, um, I, I will be curious. Despite David's best efforts to, um, um, put forth, um, the best planning ideas, there, um, at least was some concern that an overlay district seems to help Wash U more than it helps the residents. Um, and so, and that's largely because Wash U doesn't prevent, uh, present any specifics. And so it, it's a, it's a balancing act, and so getting people comfortable with how this could work and is going to be part of our, um, I think, engagement and process to get them there. Um, I was also, on a separate note, pleased to see that, um, again, we've got these open house cards out um, for the master plan. I saw that we had, um, at least some signs out in the community, but, um, it was brought to my attention that our neighborhood didn't have a sign in it. So I don't know if, um, that's, that was overlooked or if that's something that can be addressed. So.
Long line down though.
Yeah, so some people will feel slighted just in case that, so you know. Those are my comments.
Okay, very good, thank you. Did you want to say anything about the county?
We have our, our first meeting with St. Louis County tomorrow, uh, tomorrow morning at ten o'clock. So we're going to get together with Wash U's design team, Concordia's design team, uh, Public Works Planning. I'll be coming in, uh, at least for that hour to sit down with them and, and, and just kind of talk through the project and get their initial feedback, because at this point, uh, what happens with Big Bend is an unknown, whether or not there'd be a, a new signal at any point, uh, for the entrance to the, the Concordia site off of Big Bend. So we'll see how that conversation goes and we'll share that information with the public and. I, I would imagine some improvements, you know, are, are going to be in order. Just don't know what those look like.
Okay, well, um, I don't have much, but, um, we did welcome our new municipal judge, Judge Strom, and I went to his swearing-in and he's really excited about the opportunity. Um, I did weigh in, uh, and I was interviewed by KSDK on the senior tax freeze. So I've gotten actually a lot of good feedback on that. I was kind of worried. So I've gotten actually a lot of good feedback on that. I was kind of worried. Because we have, and I, I'd be interested in finding out if they know how many, how many, what's the incidence of over sixty-two in our, in our. City, but. A lot of great, a lot of good feedback on, yeah, yeah, we, we agree with you, that's, you know. So I was, I was worried I might get some seniors calling me up, but did not. And then sort of on the heels of your meeting with the Brown School, sort of independently and. Kind of around the same time, I got an email from one of our residents who is, has been working with and is knowledgeable about. The unhoused communities and, and groups that work with them and like the St. Patrick's Center, and so we had a meeting in Chief Smith. And I met with her and the head of the St. Patrick's Center and talked about a lot of really good ideas that they had. And Chief has since been communicating with, with the St. Patrick's person and. Who seems very willing to share, you know, volunteer to share her knowledge and skills to help. But subsequently, I talked to. Just an exploratory conversation with the head of the president of Fontbonne. Fontbonne has a nursing school and a social work school. And just about maybe some kind of internships or some kind of collaborative program that could help our department. So we're going to follow up on that sometime in the future here and see, see if there are opportunities there, which if there are, we'll, you know. Get, get everybody informed on that. But I think there's a lot of conversation right now about this topic for whatever reason, and. So we'll, we'll, we'll be pursuing it in all these fronts.
If I could pick up on that a little bit, remember, we had talked earlier. I, I know that some neighbor municipalities are sharing social work type support. The other part of that with the intern, that, that's a great idea and. As everyone here may be aware, the Sustainability Committee does have a Wash U intern. That has done a lot of the research behind the proposals that they have and that those kind of type collaborations, I think, are really, really. Great for a lot of reasons, not only the work, but the, the connections regionally.
Right, yeah, no, good point. Okay, so I think that's, that's everything.
Do you have one more item real quick? I had a conversation with Matt Malik about the livable communities master plan. And we need a representative from the Board of Aldermen to be on that steering committee. So just want to see if anyone's interested. The first meeting will be, I believe, September eighth is what they're targeting. That date may move a little bit. If you don't want to make a decision tonight, that, that's fine. We just need to know here fairly soon with those, those dates coming up.
I'd be happy to do it. I, I would too, but they'd probably rather have an alderman than the mayor, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I'll defer if you want me to. I'm okay, but.
One, Susan's on sustainability, right?
Yeah, so that, that's probably good.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, go ahead. That's, that's, that's terrific.
Okay.
I can always.
Let him know.
That's right.
Come and sit in.
Absolutely. Great, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, well, I think that's everything, so thanks, everybody, and we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? Okay, that's a deal.